6:00 PM, July 9th, 2025, and I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. I'd like to announce that this meeting is being televised live on local cable channel eight and 1072 HD. Would like to all rise to the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, does anyone have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, please check in with Mary Ann, two to my left, and you can have three minutes to make your comment. Anybody have any comments or any public statements? Okay, thank you. So, for some reason, I forget and I do not reach out to the public on every single application. Feel free to raise your hand. It's my intentions to make sure that everybody is heard, and hopefully there won't be any duplications, but we certainly want to listen to everybody's input. That being said, sitting tonight on our meeting is going to be four regular board members, and we'll rotate between George and Charlie. So, on the first one, why don't we go with George? How's that? And where is the agenda? It's... George, would you like to read into the record the first new hearing, please?
119 Daniel Island Road.
Good. Uh-huh. Uh, new hearings. 119 Daniels Road. New Seaberry Homes LLC requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for proposed construction of a single-family dwelling and associated site work on property located in an R3 zoning district, and the New Seaberry Special District, 1964 MAP 105, Parcels 285 and 286 Mashpee, Mass.
Yep. Okay. This shit. Yep. Thank you. Thank you. Just if you could state your name and your involvement in the project, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Nicholas Galanis. I am the vice president of New Seaberry Homes. We are submitting a written findings as to 174-17, and also to the clarification of the New Seaberry special permit, in that this lot has been an ongoing non-conforming lot under the existing zoning conditions. This clarification was brought to Commissioner Morris's attention, and he's in agreement with us. The proposed existing... the proposed extension of the non-conforming use is not subsequently more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And there is adequate land for area provided for sufficient parking and for the setbacks. I don't know if David wants to elaborate on what his... what the finding was as well.
It may make sense, David. Why don't you speak your piece, because I think it's important to explain why they are here.
Originally, if you board remembers, I brought this as a variance, and then I went through several court cases and several opinions and judgments on this. So, this has been an ongoing situation. I wrote a letter that this is not a variance in this case because the New Seaberry special permit already has setbacks to wetlands encroached. It's already... it's already exists, so it's not a variance. So, it's a... what solely is written on this and why they are here is because of the setback to wetland. They need a written finding. Other zoning aspects are not jurisdictional in this board.
Gotcha. So, that's why you've asked him to do a written finding?
It's a written finding, period.
Okay.
With the location of the building.
So, we're taking this a little bit out of order, board. Why don't we get back into order? So, can we read letters into the record, please?
Sure. Board of Health comments. 119 Daniels Road. Board of Health. House plan shows five bedrooms. Septic is designed for six bedroom with IA technology. No comments. Conservation Department. 119 Daniels Road, Island Road. Resource areas LSCSF, buffer zone to BW, BWW, buffer zone to Salt Marsh, and buffer zone to Coastal Bank. Notice of intent. Application was approved by a vote of four to one due to overall reduced disturbance in natural vegetated areas. Flood compliance foundation, IE Septic system installation, SWM installation, and native plants, plantings, rain garden install for the following conditions. Change driveway to previous pavers, minor plans, revisions, and three-year mitigation monitoring contract with a qualified professional. There's another letter from David Morris, dated May 8th, 2025. After reviewing the history and variously opinions of the rulings pertaining to New Seaberry special permit, New Seaberry special permit, I have concluded that the proposal from within the NSP district does not require a variance from 174-33 because the district is valid, is a valid, ongoing, non-conforming use, and is not creating a new nonconformity. Setback to wetlands is New Seaberry already exists. Please allow the applicant to modify their request from a variance to a written finding under 174-17, inheriting the proposal based on that criteria. Along with that other criteria, the board must determine if the proposal is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Thank you, David Morris.
Do we have any other letters?
We have a letter from Duncan Kreiser and a response from Nicholas Galanis. The first letter is dated July 9th, 2025, and the message is, "Sorry, Zoning Board Appeals. Sorry, I may have just sent you an incomplete email. See that there is a meeting tonight getting used to the website. Was wondering if you'll be discussing 119 Daniel Island Road. Was wondering the maximum height of a new home, which I thought was 30 feet, two-story plus roof. Is that from the top of the foundation? If you build a 16-foot, 20-foot-high foundation, does the height still start from the top of the foundation? I'm thinking about the new home on Daniels Island presently under construction. Also, I don't understand the New Seaberry Town and Mashpee relationship, and was wondering what it's all about seeing that New Seaberry wants us to sign some document regarding New Seaberry maintaining roads, open areas, et cetera. Was wondering how this would apply to sewer systems, which New Seaberry needs and would also be held responsible for in cleaning up the bay. Thank you. If you could just point me in the right direction. Don't mean for this to be a research project on your part." Duncan Kreiser, 27 Fiddler Crab Lane. And there is a letter from Nick Galanis dated Wednesday, 7/9, 2025, to Mary Ann. So, let me see if I can clarify a few of these concerns on 119 Daniels Island. For starters, we are New Seaberry Homes, not affiliated with New Seaberry Club or the Beach Club. There is no... there is no... the height restrictions because of this lot being in the special permit area, but that being said, we will in no way have a 16-foot to 20-foot-high foundation. It will be well below that. Plans are still being finalized. As far as the document signing, I'm not really sure what that is about. It could be the Peninsula Council and the ARC wanting the New Seaberry... wanting New Seaberry members to re-sign the declaration. Again, not affiliated with New Seaberry Homes. Sewer system does not come down anywhere near 119 Daniels Island, so I'm not really sure of what is being alluded to as to the cleaning up of the bay. Again, this would be a New Seaberry Club question, if any, as they are the majority-controlling partner of the sewer system. Thanks, Nick. Those are the only two I have, I think.
No other letters?
No, that's it.
Or is that it? Okay, so, board questions?
Go ahead.
Okay, me. Couple of questions. In reference to the letter from the gentleman who isn't a butter, I have a couple of concerns, those being your plans. Are they going to depict 30-feet heights? What height are you trying to stay with in reference to the plans?
The height will be close to 35 feet.
So, maximum... and that's using the criteria in Mashpee, which average grade, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, so it'll be closer to 35?
Yeah.
Okay.
Where's the 30 feet come from?
I was just asking. That's all. Was that in the letter, 30 feet? I don't know.
That's...
In the letter, he said 30. I'm not saying it should be 35, 30. I'm just asking.
Pompaness, it's 30 feet. That's where he's getting that.
This isn't Pompaness.
It's not, no.
Right, but he's confused.
Yeah. All that I'm trying to do here is to move this along, but I'm also trying to protect the best I can in the neighborhood, right? That's my goal. And that being said, if you can make some commitments here, like, okay, it's close to 35, I'm fine with that. I'm not saying the rest of the board is. I presume they will be, but that's up to them.
Yeah.
As far as I'm concerned, that's fine. And so, I presume, what do we have for flood control this? Is that first story going to be...
It will be built to the building code, of course. I mean, and that's... that's, again, as far as the zoning, even the building height is not a concern with this board because you don't have the jurisdiction.
This was all gone through with conservation as well?
So, the main thing is, is this going to be...
We're just trying to find out so everybody... because we're on TV, and people want to know what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, but this did... this did come from a variance request...
Well, that's one of my best...
Which I learned, you know, with working with these people, which I thank them for. They gave me an education as far as this special permit, which has been going on since 1964. It's ongoing, and it's due to end next year. Yeah, so, this is basically wrapping this up. So, we came to this board basically for a decision I made to... the decision I was faced with. So, I thought the right thing, right decision I made to make a finding. We came here, they redid it, we met a couple of weeks ago, a month ago, saying that they refiled and sent out new letters and refiled it. They're doing everything right, and that's all that matters is a written finding. Is it more detrimental? Do they have enough parking?
And I'm not trying to be obstinate here. I think we're going to get to where we need... I hope we're going to get to where we need to get to, and I'm not trying to hold up anything. I'm just trying to alleviate some concerns, and you're saying 35? Fine, okay. Next issue, have you withdrawn your request for variance?
They already did that.
Well, I just want to make sure. So, at the last meeting, you withdrew it?
Yeah. We went over this, and we talked about this hearing, and that...
Rob Mills did.
There was nobody here that had an issue with the finding.
All right, so, I'm fine with it at this point in time to move it forward. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay. Jonathan, you have any questions?
Well, seeing as though there's nothing we can really talk about.
Well, I think we can talk about anything, but I think I get what David's saying.
Well, doesn't meet the criteria of a written finding. That's what you need to talk about.
Is it not more detrimental?
Do they have enough hard-street parking?
How often I would normally ask, I can't ask.
Well, I think the applicant's being very good. I think he's being very open to this board. He's working with this board. He said, you know, like the height, 35 feet. Great, no problem. And so, we're trying to work with him too. So, I think he's doing exactly that. I think the process is working great, right? How you feel, sir?
Fine.
I mean, at the end of the day, if you leave this room and everything is great, right? That's how it works. So, I ask...
All the stuff that I would normally ask...
Well...
Is out of bounds.
But that's particular, yeah.
Yeah. So, anyway, why don't we go?
So, there's nothing to say about it.
George, you have anything?
No.
Jared, you have nothing? Okay. So, let's go to the audience. Does the audience have any input in reference to the application? Okay. So, Mr. Morris, do you have anything else?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the board one more time?
Good.
Okay. All right, so I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing in reference to this written finding.
I'll make that motion.
So, I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Can I get a motion in reference to the written finding itself?
Go on, let me do the church.
That'd be great.
All right. Motion relative to 119 Daniels Island Road. New Seaberry Homes LLC requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for proposed construction of a single-family dwelling, excuse me, and associated site work on property located in an R3 zoning district, and the New Seaberry Special Permit District, 1964 MAP 105, Parcels 284 and 286 Mashpee, Mass. with the following conditions. Excuse me. Number one, motion. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Laws 40A, Section 6. Two, site plan. Prepared for New Seaberry Homes, date December 11th, 2024, prepared by BSC Group, stamped and signed by Karen J. Healy, professional land surveyor, and Ryan Katania, professional engineer. Number three, the board finds under 174-17, proposed project is not substantially more detrimental to either the town or the neighborhood.
You guys going to make it?
Yes, die.
We better go quick.
Call an ambulance.
My second...
That's it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Process worked.
Thank you very much.
Even choppy, but I got it done.
Yeah. All right, thank you, sir.
Have a good day.
All right. Yep. Sign my letter away. Okay, so, sitting on the next meeting will be the four regular board members and Charlie. Charlie, would you please read 14 Brewster Road into the record, please?
All right. New hearing, 14 Brewster Road. Owners Ingrid K. Spillane and David A. Spillane request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a farmer's porch to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, MAP 68, Parcel 22 Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, one second, let's get the findings. Anyone here for 14 Brewster?
Is this old stuff?
Come on up, and if you could...
Back to Mary Ann.
Back to Mary Ann.
Back to Mary Ann. Thank you. If you give us your name, please, and your involvement in the project?
Sure, thank you. My name is Ingrid Spillane. I reside at 14 Brewster Road in Mashpee, and I am the owner of the property, who would like to build a farmer's porch.
Any relation to the Spillanes of Foxborough?
I...
There are a lot of Spillanes, I think, in the world, aren't there, though?
Um, yeah, my Spillanes are from West Roxbury, but yes, I...
I only ask you as my attorney for years. Great guy.
That's for us, that's for them.
And I'm sorry if I interrupted you.
Not at all.
Feel free to present, you do.
I just... I've never done this before, I'm sorry.
Well, we don't bite, so you'll do great, I'm sure.
My parents had the house built in early 2000s, and we've done a lot of improvements to it since we moved there this past June, full-time. The front of the house currently, or when they built it, they put up a small step in front of the front door, just one step up, two handrails, and when we were having the house reshingled and everything like that, they said, "Do you realize that this was just attached with finishing nails?" So, you know, the porch was hanging off the back, porch hanging off the front, and we've done so much work on it, and it looks wonderful, but the front, we'd like to have some room and just, you know, kind of bring it up a little bit as far as aesthetics.
I could probably clarify a few more other things. Brewster Road, this basically takes... Brewster Road goes straight along high-tension wires, there's utility easements there. They put a road here for these two particular houses to... for that ease, to make an easement for underground utilities, overhead utilities, whatever, so they could always get to that area. So, it's part of the road, it's a frontage. It's unfortunate, but what they need... they've already encroached, so it is, I believe it's a finding, right? Is this a finding?
They're doing a written finding, so it's not a variance?
It's not a variance. So, you know, otherwise, they wouldn't be here. That's the only reason, because of that easement, which is part of Brewster Road, just for these two houses.
Is that depicted by the word gravel on the plan? That's the easement you're talking about?
It's actually tied.
Okay, so it's not gravel?
Yeah, that's an easement. It goes to where the high tension is.
I get it.
So, the town and utilities can get there. It's just a weird setup.
All right, so why don't we go through the checklist here, and then we'll get some questions from the board? So, any comments, please?
We got conservation.
Excuse me, thank you for your presentation.
Thanks.
You did good.
Great.
Conservation for 14 Brewster Road, not within wetlands jurisdiction. And Board of Health comments, July 9th, 2025, 14 Brewster Road, no increase in habitable space, no comment. So, nothing from either of those. Nothing else?
Anything else, Mary Ann?
No.
Okay, this is moving along a little light speed, isn't it? So, David, anything else to say?
I'm good.
All right, board questions?
It's a corner lot, is it?
Yes.
Okay. So, Brewster Road is beside your house and in front of your house, or?
Yes. I... Yeah, thanks. I need him to nod because I'm just... the front of my house is that...
She's got you like a little puppet.
I know, I'm like, come on, please nod.
No, it is like, it is a unique... it's so that... it's so they can get to the utilities. It's an outlet.
So, that depiction of the gravel road, it's paved, but it's really an access to the power.
Yeah, but it's still part of the road.
Yeah, it's still, yeah.
You know, so...
So, to answer his question, it is a corner lot.
It's a 40-foot setback on both sides according to what's...
It's a corner lot, yeah.
According to our...
It really is.
According to our bylaws, yes. So, they need relief.
Jonathan's up to the plate. Go ahead, Jonathan.
No, I...
So, is not the couple of questions I... is not the proposed porch getting closer to the road than what exists today?
Correct.
That's why it's a finding, yeah.
So, it is less than... so it's a...
It was less than 40 feet to begin with.
So, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, so they're going to...
They're extending, they're extending, which is they have a right to ask this board.
Totally understand.
We just need to find out if it's more detrimental than what...
Are there any other non-conformities in the law, you know?
Not at all.
For sure. I'm just asking him because I think he might know better than you.
Sure, sure, no, please.
I'm sorry. I usually ask the applicant, but it may make sense to ask, David. I just try and understand if there are other areas that do not... well, there's 23.9, which is a... that would be a either rear yard or side yard, but she's not encroaching, but it's still a nonconformity.
But she's not increasing that.
Exactly. Then you got a 60, so there are a couple of others, but she's not affecting them in any way, shape, or form.
No, the only thing she's affecting is with the farmer's porch.
And what about lot coverage, David? What do we do with that?
What does it go from and to?
Lot coverage is 17.1.
With the porch?
Yes. Oh, sorry, I'm reading.
Yes.
So, that's below.
Yeah, that's good. Pretty straightforward to me. It looks to me like she's done the right thing as far as applying for a written finding.
Yep.
All right, so let's go through the checklist here. So, anybody in the audience have anything to say about this application? Okay. Any back to the board, any questions from the board? Did you say a board, I think?
Good.
Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Go ahead, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion in reference to the written finding, please?
Go to right here.
Motion relative to 14 Brewster Road.
Thank you.
Owners Ingrid K. Spillane and David A. Spillane request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a farmer's porch to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district.
Excuse me, Charlie, I need to interrupt. I don't think we read her letter into the record, did we?
Well, I'm sorry.
We should read her letter into the record.
Is that this one?
Yes.
Let me dig it out.
It's a letter to the board. I'm sorry, I...
No.
I should have told you before. We should read that into the record.
I got it in front of me. You don't have to.
No, it's imperative that we do so.
I have the letter dated June 2, 2025, from the Spillanes, Mr. and Mrs. Spillane. Dear Mashpee Zoning Board, we would like to formally request permission to have a farmer's porch constructed on our property located at 14 Brewster Road in Mashpee, Mass. The property located at the above address is a non-conforming, single-family dwelling with setbacks. My family is seeking your approval to build our farmer's porch if you find the attached paperwork acceptable and in line with the required guidelines set by the town of Mashpee. And I have a couple of other letters that were emailed.
Oh.
And dated June 2, 2025, from Ingrid Spillane. The six-foot porch alteration would not be detrimental to the neighborhood and would be in compliance with the setbacks. The drainage patents would not be altered, and the proposed porch will sit atop sonar tubes, same with the rear deck. And then, it's a letter from Madigan Land Surveying. You could simply state to them that your setbacks are in compliance and generally the same as the abutting neighbors, and a little bit more than them. And I think that takes care of all of the material.
Sorry for the interruption, Charlie.
No, that's okay.
Please continue.
I will continue. Okay, we're to the point of the motion. Number one, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mash General Laws 40A, Section 6. Number two, site plan. Prepared for David and Ingrid Spillane, 14 Brewster Road, scale 1 inch equals 40 feet, date May 30, 2025, prepared by Madigan Land Surveying LLC, stamped and signed by David Madigan, professional land surveyor, number 41864. Number three, farmer's porch plan. Prepared for 14 Brewster Road, Mashpee, Mass., prepared by Vincent Smith. Number four, condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. Number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, the board finds under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure for use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Good job.
Now you get to have it built, or build it yourself.
Can I ask a quick question? It just has to do with the front yard. As far as installing a flag pole, does that also require...
That would be up to the zoning enforcement officer.
Okay.
He's the boss.
I'll leave it for another time. Thank you very much, everybody. Good evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Well done. What am I doing? Okay. All right. Sorry.
There's two here.
There's two?
There's two.
Charlie? Okay, and the next one will be the four regular members and George, how's that? George, we'd like to read 23 Cross Tree into the record, please?
Sure. 23 Cross Tree Way. Owners Susan M. Brady, trustees, request a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-story addition to the front and easterly side of the house and relocate the existing set of stairs to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3, R-3 zoning district, map 112, parcel 25, Mashpee, Mass.
Counselor?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, Susan Brady, trustee, for her property at 23 Cross Way, Cross Tree Way, I'm sorry. This is an alterations, extensions, change of a pre-existing non-conforming structure under 174-17 and 174-33. It's located in the R3 zoning district, so the minimum dimensional requirements are 40,000 square feet of land area, 150 feet of frontage, 40-yard, 40-foot front yard setback, 15-foot side and rears, 20% lot coverage, 35-foot building height, and a setback to levels of 50 feet. The lot is wholly within land subject to coastal storm flows, the flood zone, the effective area is 13,115 square feet, but again, for zoning, we're at zero square feet. So we have three non-conformities. We have the lot area, which is zero because of the flood zone. Our lot coverage is 100% because of the flood zone. And we also have a side yard setback right here, which is 14.1, so that's a non-conforming. That is your three non-conformities. So what the proposal today is pretty simple, pretty straightforward. There's basically a few additions that are all within the footprint of the existing structure here, here, and here that are shown. They're actually first-floor additions, they're just kind of enclosing some of the open areas, and there's also a second story addition over what's decking and decked now. But again, everything is within the existing footprint. The lot coverage is staying exactly the same, the coverage is staying exactly the same. Under the old rule, your lot coverage is 23.3%. It is remaining at 23.3%. There's 3,054 square feet of structure coverage. There will be 3,054 square feet of structure coverage after this, with the proposed additions. So again, we're not changing anything outside of the footprint. All this work is happening within the footprint. The, not changing the existing, the non-conformity to the side yard isn't being affected. Again, everything is within the existing footprint, not creating any other new non-conformities. You know, it's consistent with development in this neighborhood. I provided photos of kind of surrounding areas. This has gone through conservation. I know there are some, some notes that are being handled with them, but it was approved by conservation.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, Charlie, would you like to read into the record any correspondence, please?
Sure, we have Conservation and Board of Health. Board of Health comments, July 9th, 2025. House to remain three-bedroom, no increase in flow, no comment. Conservation Department, July 9th, 2025, the 23 Cross Tree Way, resource areas LSCSF, buffer zone to Salt Marsh and buffer zone to Coastal Bank. Notice of intent application was approved unanimously by the board due to additions within previously altered areas. New foundations will be plugged compliant and no removal of natural vegetation for the following conditions. Replace removed plants from previous order of conditions and a three-year mitigation monitoring contract with a qualified professional. Inspection after approval revealed a new violation of expansion of lawn toward the water and Conservation will not sign off a building permit until compliance is achieved.
Looking to this one.
Could you say that again, please, that one?
Inspection after approval revealed a new violation of expansion of lawn toward the water and Conservation will not sign off on a building permit until compliance is achieved.
So they will get a building permit?
Yeah. That's clearly not our issue.
Not our issue.
That's just one of the conditions that's part of the.
Not our hunt. Right. Any other letters?
Nothing else.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, so, David?
No issue.
Okay.
So David, you won't issue a building permit unless Conservation signs off, right?
More than likely, yeah.
What does that mean?
I think my client's already, I brought this up to her. She sent me an email saying that she hired somebody to work with Drew to, I mean, it's just lawn area. So I guess there would be two things. I don't know if I reduce, because she has to reduce the lawn area, are you going to want me to come back with a new plan showing less lawn area as a modification? Or is that, can be?
I mean, I think it's important, Russ, for you to wear that so we can, yeah. As a chair, I can't see you coming back for that issue.
Okay, understood, no.
Only because you brought it up and we're going to either put it in a motion or do something to deal with it, right?
Yeah, exactly. And again.
So they actually hired someone, a wetland scientist or something?
You know, I get, this is the email from my client.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, but she hired somebody that worked with Drew.
That's between Conservation and Building.
All you got to do is hold off on signing the plan. Sign the new plan when it comes in.
It's up to the board. If you guys want me to do that, I'll do it.
Well, that way the record is correct.
Jonathan, you're.
Yeah, I don't know, but I don't know that there's.
It's me.
I don't want to cause more of a problem. I don't know what Drew and.
Well, what Jonathan just said is if you're going to amend the plan, just have it, bring it down, he'd like to see it, bring it down and I'll sign off?
Okay, yeah, I'll have Cape and Islands if they're going to do.
Don't have to wait for the next meeting.
Right, that's fine. I could have Cape and Islands submit a revised with the lawn area in.
Tell Mary Ann to call me.
That way the correct one's on file.
Yeah, understood. And then the only thing is when you, when you do your motion, I know it says second, we do have first floor.
You're presuming we're going to do a motion?
No, I know.
I was just sitting here saying, we're being a little presumptive here.
If the board is inclined to have a motion to approve, I would just add that there are first-floor additions in addition to second-floor additions because it wasn't in the notice, so I just want to make sure that's.
So Charlie, did you just hear what you're saying? If we were to make a motion, you want to say that there's a first-floor addition and a second-floor addition?
Right.
And also, one of the motions would be that, that a plan will be amended.
A new plan will be amended and filed.
If Conservation requires a new plan, then it'll be amended, filed, and I will come in and sign it.
Right.
That way they don't have to wait for the next meeting?
Right.
All right, so we're at the point right now where we've gone to David, right? I'm going to go to the audience. Anyone in the audience having anything to say about this application? Okay. Board questions? I have a couple of questions. I see, I think I know your theory. I see no drainage, site drainage, Russell. Which, as you know, Counselor, is my pet peeve.
No, I know. Yeah, I don't see any new stormwater.
Is the theory because it's within the footprint of the existing building?
No, actually, I stand corrected. So, Mr. Chair, if you read on the right side.
I see proposed drywall for no roof downsides.
Yeah.
But I don't see.
And then there's down below is his typical Cape and Islands.
Overflow pipe.
Overflow pipe.
Yes, which, which makes me ecstatic.
I see it. I'm just a lawyer, I'm not the engineer.
Yeah, listen, I know, I'm just the chairman, that's all.
So there is going to be. There is proposed stormwater management.
I get it, I get it, yeah. So there's.
It's like a chamber down there on the.
Due to the fact that it's within the same footprint, I'm not going to hold it up, but I mean, it's okay, but my point of the whole thing is, is, I mean, there's no calculations really on there whatsoever, so.
No, I think their standard is.
Well, I think, I think, I think the argument is that it's within the same footprint and so the roofline isn't going to really capture any more water than exists today, right?
Correct.
Exactly.
I get it, so, all right, that being said, fine.
George has a question.
Who has a question?
So, I mean, I'm just trying to understand what's going on here. What is the project?
So if you look at the site plan, if you have the colored one.
I do.
There's three darkened areas. That's all first-floor additions.
Okay.
So they're just kind of enclosing areas that are open, that are over a covered deck. There's like a farmer's porch over here that they're going to put a dining room. If you look at the floor architectures too, it shows you on the first floor plan, the second, we have, there's existing and proposed that shows you. And then there's a second floor going over what's existing deck here.
So no new bedrooms, no more bedrooms?
No new bedrooms, and there's no expansion of the house. So we're not changing lot coverage, we're not taking.
Covering areas that were currently exposed, is that kind of what?
That is correct. Yep, yep.
Fair enough.
Anyone else have any questions?
He took my question.
Oh.
It's good.
Anyone else?
So you have five-bedroom bathrooms and three bedrooms?
Yeah, there's three bedrooms.
Did we read the board health letter into the?
We did.
Yeah.
We did.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, go ahead.
This is a doctor's home, is it a septic system?
Handle on. I don't know how old the septic system is.
Obviously it passed, so it's not a.
Right, it passed, and it's not a raise and replace, there's no requirement of an upgrade.
Right, true.
Yeah, I have a bathroom on the first, well, there's one on the first and.
Number of bathrooms really is irrelevant.
Yeah, it's not a zoning issue, but.
Nope, not at all.
Looks like there's only two bathrooms.
And the new, new height is 31 feet?
Yeah, so we're under the 35 that's required.
Where's Scott? We need Scott.
What do you need?
Read this stuff.
I'd be reading it, but I don't have, I've got to do other things. I figured I'd take the site plan.
I mean, we're not trying to.
I think it's pretty straightforward.
Just keeping it in line with the, I mean, the existing structure is two stories, so we're not, you know, making any higher levels.
Right. All right, so I did go out to the audience, let's see, any other board questions?
No.
David, do you have anything else?
No.
All right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing, please?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion in reference to the written finding, please.
I've got two questions, just to make sure I get the motion correct. If Conservation requires a new plan, part of this motion will be that that plan will satisfy the requirements?
Well, what Jonathan wanted to do, and that's up to Jon, I'm okay with it, is if there's a new plan required, I will come in and initial the plan.
We'll submit.
Instead of having to wait for another meeting.
Right, we'll submit a new plan to the building department.
Now, that's only in reference to that one issue.
That lawn area, correct.
Which is, which was brought up and when you read the document from Conservation, that's dealing with that one issue.
Okay.
If they bring something else up, it's a new, it's a new world, right?
Absolutely, understood.
That's why, but that way we don't have to wait, the applicant doesn't need to wait for the next meeting.
Right, just for a lawn area change.
Let me just make sure, I want to get, I don't want to have something hanging out there that later we have to worry about.
So it's just conditioned on.
So if Conservation requires a new plan, the new plan will be approved by the zoning Board of Appeals?
No. I guess the way I would, and I'm not trying to.
I think I can make a similar. If, if Conservation requires an amended plan.
For lawn.
Said amended plan will be submitted to Mary Ann and Mary Ann will have me initial as the chairman of the board.
That's all. Easy.
And that's only in reference to the issue that was brought up by Conservation about the lawn.
The Conservation issue, right.
About the lawn.
So I think you say, Charlie, if Conservation requires a new plan, it will be filed by the applicant and signed by the chair.
That would be the plan of record. Okay. Okay. And then you had another amendment, you were going to include another amendment, right?
The amendment relative to.
Right, just, it's first floor and second floor additions.
You were going to say that there is a, just for the, for the record, there is a first floor addition and a second floor addition.
Right. Okay, questions?
But has no impact on lot coverage or anything else?
Make a motion relative to 23 Cross Tree Way. Owner Susan M. Bradley, trustee, requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for construction of a second-story addition to the front and easterly side of her house and relocate an existing set of stairs to a pre-existing non-conforming structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 112, parcel 25, Mashpee, Mass, with the following conditions. Number one, motion, the board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding under Mass General Laws 40A Section 6. Number two, site plan, prepared for Susan Brady, 23 Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass, sheet 1 of 1, date March 31, 2025, prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, stamped and signed by John McElwee, registered land surveyor, number 33602, and Raoul Lizard Rivera, civil engineer, number 4846845. Building plans, prepared for Brady residence, 23 Cross Tree Way, Mashpee, Mass, date 031525, sheet 1, first floor plan and front elevation, sheet 2, second floor plan and right side elevation, sheet 3, left and rear elevation, sheet 4, foundation plan, building sections and details, prepared by Acuplicity LLC. Now, only in terms of placing it where it should place. The issue relative to the first floor and second floor, should that be as part of the plan?
You can plug it in anywhere, it's fine.
I would just note that there are, because the, the public hearing notices second-floor additions. I just want to make sure that we're approving first floor and second floor.
Trying to clarify the record.
And the building plans will include plans for the first floor and second floor, which are being presented and if voted on will be approved by the board this evening. Enough? Okay. Condition on all town department comments read into the record, including but not limited to the Conservation Department and Board of Health. If the Conservation Department requires an amended plan, that will be presented to the zoning Board of Appeals where it will be reviewed and approved by the chairperson.
It's okay, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
It'll work.
Yeah, that's.
It is fine, Charlie, it's good. That'll do it, right? Counselor, you happy with that?
I'm okay with it.
Okay. And does not require resubmission to the boarding, the zoning Board of Appeals. That's, I just want to get that over.
Right.
All right, number five, any changes to the plans will require the applicant to return to this board. Number six, condition that the applicant seek and obtain the building department review in reference to the tree bylaw, chapter 175 of the town bylaws, prior to the application of a building permit. And number seven, the board finds under 174-17 that the proposed project is not substantially more detrimental than the pre-existing non-conforming structure or use to either the town or the neighborhood.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Just for the board's knowledge, I'm checking to make sure that we have a survey and an engineer standpoint on each one of these applications.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Nice.
See?
Yep.
Nope. We haven't been doing it for years.
Thank you very much.
Are you staying in that seat because you're the next app, too? Oh, very nice.
And the one after that, and the one after...
Really? Well, we're killing it lately, aren't we?
We are.
The next one, and the next one, and the next one.
Well, now that you're down to one meeting a month, you know, I can load them all up.
You're lucky we're having that conversation, alright. Actually, you snuck the other one in on me.
What's the status of the...
Knock it through.
Yeah, I know, I know.
What's the status of the...
I'll take the buyer.
You want?
I'll take the plate.
Oh, I talked to Mary Ann today, she's still up in the air.
My only concern is that we don't leave something out there that requires everything to come back to the board.
Right.
And I think that's why we're being open-minded, our reference to handling it the way we're handling, because we don't want applicants to have to come back a month later.
That's right.
Right. You know?
There you go.
Any new highs in the building department?
It's not completed yet, let's put it that way, so I'm sitting there going, you gotta, that's amazing. Okay, so, do we have, did that come back, the second page? I have asked it off here. Okay. So, sitting on this will be, oh, there it is, see, I knew it didn't come back.
Oh.
You said it came.
I missed it.
Alright, sitting on the next one will be the four regular members, what was the last one, Charlie, were you on the last? So, George, you'll be up to the plate, the next one, which is 8 Nahoyden.
8 Nahoyden Road, owner Edward J. Farley requests a written finding under 17417 of the zoning bylaws to allow for the construction of a second floor addition, a deck to the easterly side of the house, and add a roof over the stoop in the front of the house to a pre-existing non-conforming property, structure on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 125, parcel 123, Mashpee, Mass.
Okay, um...
Counselor. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing Mr. Farley, who's the owner of 8 Nahoyden. As the hearing notice stated, we have several additions to the main house here, which is the deck, covering the stoop.
You're gonna have one.
And then putting on a second floor addition. There is also an ADU proposed, which I think normally would be as of right, but I don't know, you know, we're in the flood zone, so I don't know if David takes a different approach with that, because it meets all your requirements for an as-of-right ADU under the new law. But, again, it is in the flood zone, we are non-conforming as to flood zone, and setback to wetlands.
It's all up to him.
Yeah, I mean, it was on the plans, and it was part of...
Well, that concerns me, if it's on the plans, because if he says you need to file with his board, I mean, are we prepared, did you advertise an ADU? Kinda messed me up here a little, Counselor.
Well, you know, it was part of my presentation, so...
Well, wasn't part of the advertising? That's the problem.
Is that an issue?
Well, I mean, I think it's important that all butters and people in the town have a right to see an application.
Generally, the ADU would be as of right, so...
Well, that's up to the, I mean, if that's the case, and you don't have to come to this board, that would be David's choice, and then I don't think we have a problem at that point.
ADUs above the garage, right?
It's a separate structure.
Is it an ADU?
There's a garage in the...
Accessory dwelling unit.
And that's why we're here?
No, no, we're here for, well, my presentation has both of them, so the plans on both, I was under the impression that we're gonna do everything, because that's what I, you know, put in my presentation, put on the plan, but, you know...
Did your application state an ADU?
Well, the application doesn't have any place to put, you know, your application's lacking in that regard. There's no description of the project on your application, and maybe that needs to change.
Yes, I would say it would, yeah.
Because I put it in my, the presentation that I provide with the application does say there's also a proposed ADU.
Did you, I believe you probably didn't advertise an ADU, correct?
No, they didn't say anything about the garage.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little concerned about that, but David, what do you think, does he have to come to this board for the ADU?
Not always, no.
No, but in this case, you think he does?
Well, I'm one, where is the ADU, it's over the garage?
Yeah.
It's over, this a garage addition?
Right, with an ADU over, above it.
And that's why we're here?
Well, there's other additions, too, to the main house, we're here for that, too.
But there's no mention of the garage.
I think the ADU is irrelevant.
Yes, but there's no mention of the garage on this.
Oh, wait a second, if the ADU is irrelevant, then why do you even bring it up? Because it sounds to me like he's saying he's willing to approve it without this board's approval.
Well, I just wanna make sure, because it's shown on the plan, somebody may have a question, like, you know, why are you showing this on the...
Am I saying this correctly, David, you're not asking this board to approve or disapprove an ADU then on this plan? You can issue that permit without our approval?
Correct.
Counselor.
Okay.
So, I would rather you not make mention of an ADU, and this board may even say we're not approving or disapproving an ADU.
Sure, that's fine, I just wanted to be clear, it's on the plan.
Okay.
I just want the board not to...
And I think you just heard from the zoning force office, so...
So, again, we're in the R3 zoning district, 40,000 square feet, 150 feet of frontage, 40-foot front yard setback, 15-side and rear, lot coverage 20%, 35-foot height, and 50-foot setback to wetland. The lot is wholly within the flood zone, our only two non-conformities are because of the flood zone, lot area, zero square feet per zoning, setback to wetland zero, and technically, we're 100% lockup. Those are the only non-conformities, there are no front yard, side yard, or rear yard setback non-conformities, there will be none, you know, with the proposed additions to the main house, which are, again, shown here. And our lot coverage under, if you take the whole lot area, which is 19,765 square feet, as a percentage of that, our coverage is 5.9%, with the proposed structures, it's 10.4%, so still well under the 20% that this board would otherwise require. Uh, this hall was reviewed and approved by conservation, there's storm water that's shown here and here. Uh, no new non-conformities are being created with this project, again, we're not changing any of the setbacks, it's all, all the structures conform to your minimum setbacks.
Dry wells down the bottom.
And we're not, you know, again, we're well under the 20% that the board would normally use as a threshold.
So, the entire lot is in the flood zone?
Entire lot's in the flood zone, if you went to this lot, you wouldn't even, it's not near the water.
I know where it is.
Yeah, but it's entirely in the flood zone.
Um, can I just read those letters into the record? So, Charlie, could you read letters into the record, please?
Yep. We have Board of Health comments July 9th for 8 Nahoyden Road. Board of Health, septic is designed for three bedrooms. Main house will have two, and the ADU will have one. Septic line from ADU is connecting to main house plumbing, so two tanks in series or a two-compartment tank is not needed. On the conservation, 8 Nahoyden Road, resource area, LSCSF. Notice of intent application was approved. Due to proposed location of addition and ADU are in previously altered areas, and no disturbance to native vegetation will occur for construction.
Is that it, Charlie?
That's it.
Any other letters, that's it?
I have nothing else.
Um, board questions?
Aight. They're increasing lot coverage, like, I know it's 100%, but they're even making the...
Well, he just gave us, he said it didn't exceed, what was it, 10% you say?
The 10.4%. The 10.4% will be the proposed under the old way.
On the old way would be 10.4%.
So, it's well within what you've obtained in the past. Right. In flood zones.
That answer your question?
Yeah, now, we don't have to, um, there's no mention of the garage in the motion either, or in the, yeah.
Well, it says second floor of the Bonanza La Vaca Station, second floor, decks, and added roof over the stoop of the front house.
There's no mention of the garage, and we're increasing, and this is 100% in the flood area?
That's where the ADU is going.
Over the garage.
Right.
So, the question then is, is if we make, if there were a motion to be made that says that the garage is not part of this decision, what does that do to you?
I'd have to come back.
Yeah, because the garage is...
Is part of it, right.
Yeah, the ADU's on the second floor.
Right, I mean, that's where it is, so... Again, this is, I don't know, as I said, you don't have a project description on your application, so...
No, I get it.
You rely on my presentation, which did include all this information.
I just get concerned, because the butters have rights, right, and those rights are to make sure that they're notified properly, and that they can read, and they can understand, they can speak their piece.
Well...
And in this case, they were not, that didn't get followed, really, so that concerned me a little bit.
How many existing bedrooms are there?
Uh, three.
Two. Two.
It's a three-bedroom septic, and there's two in the main house and one for the ADU.
So, and it's approved for three.
Approved for three.
So, what are we gonna do about this garage issue, because it frankly is concerning to me?
I mean, I guess the only other, the only other thing I can think of...
Is there a garage there now?
Shouldn't be looking the other way.
I agree. We've got, this is...
You can't look the other way.
I have a couple of things, that is important to me, and number two is, somewhere down the road, and it might be now, we gotta start really taking this drainage into, you know, account, because I'm gonna tell you, he's showing me a drywall, did I? I don't wanna step at your toes, Sharon, am I ill set?
Yeah, I'm fine.
I mean, we're gonna take care of your issue, really. Um, so he's showing an H20 drywall, and I know he's putting an H20 in the driveway, but he doesn't wanna put an H20 because of the cost in the backyard, I bet you, but yet he's showing only one detail, it's an H20.
And you're doubling the roof? You're going from how many to how many square feet?
Well, you're adding roof to where the...
Yeah, the garage.
Right. The garage ADU is absolutely...
You're basically doubling the size of the structure.
Well, and you're also adding some additional roofs on the building.
Right.
I mean, my point is this, it's not, I mean, you know, it's not a, this is an engineering firm that comes before your board all the time with these types of proposals and these types of stormwater management. I continue to push the button on the drainage, and...
There's nothing in your bylaw that dictates what things need to be sized for.
Yes, there is, is the bylaw, is the application, clearly, is, under state law, you cannot, in any application, do anything that's gonna increase the velocity and/or the extent of the water leaving the site.
Well...
That's a given.
Well, he's...
So, if he adds one square inch of roofline, you've gotta deal with it.
Which he is, by putting the...
Well, yeah, but the question is, is he dealing with it, is he dealing with it? The, no one can answer, because I have no drainage calculations, and I have no size, I have no idea whether he is handling it correctly.
I agree, he's doubling the size of the roof.
Here's my point in this whole thing, somehow we're gonna deal with, number one, what's concerning the heck out of me is the advertisement, is that issue. If we're gonna hold this application up for that, I'd like to talk about drainage, if we're not, then at that point, I'm gonna make a couple of comments about the drainage, it can be dealt with a different way.
Right.
But if we're gonna hold up this application due to the way it was advertised, then we gotta look at the drainage.
Okay.
Because we might as well deal with it at the same time. Does that make sense to the board?
I think we hold up the application, and I think you deal with the drainage and...
You can't look the other way.
Understood, I couldn't agree more, I couldn't agree more.
I think you need to refile the advertising and address the chair's concern about drainage.
And I will tell you what my concerns are, he's showing a drywall design as an H20, which is a heavy-duty design tank, right? And you only put those in loaded areas such as driveways and roads. He's got one in the driveway, so he made it an H20, he's not gonna put the backyard as an H20, so he's not gonna comply with his plan. He's showing on the plan, and I know he's not gonna do it.
Right.
I'm positive. So, we might as well get the plan right, and have him show on the plan, the driveway's an H20, the backyard isn't an H20, and then have him give me the calculations.
Okay.
Then I can run the calculations, and I'm gonna be able to tell whether he's got adequate storage for the new roof, and what he's doing for the house.
Other question, so, he's showing a drywall, so this is a plan, right, this is the approved plan?
Yep.
Or why did he not do it?
We haven't approved it, yeah?
No, but you see the drywall design?
I do.
And see how it says H20?
Yeah.
H20 is a heavy-duty tank, put in locations under driveways or roads, because it's reinforced, it's expensive.
Right.
He's not gonna put an H20 in the backyard.
That means you can drive over it.
Yeah, he's not gonna drive over in the backyard, so he's not gonna spend the money and put an H20 in the backyard, why don't we just correct the plan and make sure the plan's right?
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, and, in that scheme of things, I'd like to see the calculations, I can put them in the computer, I can check them. And he might not have enough calcula, he might not have enough drainage for the site, and he may have water leaving the site in like a five-year storm, which he shouldn't have.
Right.
Could we get back to the garage for a moment?
Sure.
Now, the garage was not part of the advertisement, am I correct?
Right.
If this is to be approved, if the motion is to be approved, the motion as framed now makes no mention of the garage at all.
And I'm saying, the applicant looked at me when I said, we're gonna actually X that out, he's like, ah, I can't do that, because that's the meat and bones of part of the application.
I think we have to go back to the... So, let me ask you this, we have a hearing, there's a special meeting on the 23rd. Is there enough time, I mean, if we can re-advertise it with the garage, then...
That's up to Mary Ann.
It's two weeks to keep people...
It's up to Mary Ann. Mary Ann?
What's it say, what's the bylaw say about advertising?
No, it's gonna be 14 days progress.
It's two weeks, I think.
Yep, 14.
That's the bylaw?
I think that's state law, I don't think it's the bylaw.
Yeah, see, I could work the drainage aspect somehow, but the advertiser's gonna be right.
Yeah, no, I don't disagree.
The last thing I want is to have in a butter is someone aggrieved, or someone who has some concern in this application, sitting there saying, I didn't go because I didn't, it wasn't, the advertiser didn't state that this was going on.
Right.
I don't need that.
Nope. Yeah, I think, you know, just going, I think you're gonna have to read your applications to...
And I've already done them once, but I'm certainly bringing on the comments, and more than happy to bring it to the board, and that makes total sense.
Because I think, yeah, having some line item for a project description, I think would be beneficial.
I think that makes total sense.
Avoid this in the future.
I think you need to withdraw without prejudice and refile.
No, 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 I don't think that's necessary.
No, you just continue.
You just continue.
I'll continue.
Well, here's the question...
But if you continue, you gotta re-advertise, right?
Well, yeah, but we can't, it sounds like we're not gonna make the next meeting.
Not the 23rd.
Not gonna make the 23rd.
No, but I don't think you have to withdraw, you just do a new public notice.
No, I'm, yeah, no, I don't think...
Advertise and draw.
I think you don't have to, I'm not, I don't believe you have to withdraw, but I think you're not gonna make the next meeting. Am I correct?
So, what's the meaning of availability on the...
August what?
August.
Well, look at it this way, Counselor, we weren't gonna have that other meeting in July, anyway.
I know.
And, you know, you got a couple of good, you know, decisions out of that one, right, or at least applications.
Yeah, that, I mean, I want it to be done, you know, obviously having it done correctly, and if it gives the capabilities, the ability to provide you the information you need on the drainage, then that's, you know, all fine.
Again, I could work through the drainage somehow of the way, but we have to make sure this is advertised correctly.
Yeah, understood.
I think that's important, I think that's part of this, that's part of this job's, you know, marching order, it's clear.
Is it acceptable to you if it is continued until August 10th, allowing the owner to re-advertise?
Well, it's not the owner, but it's...
No.
Allowing it to be re-advertised?
August 13th.
So, are you requesting for an extension?
Yes, I'm requesting.
Until August 13th?
Yes.
So, can I get a motion accepting the applicant's request for an extension until August 13th?
You got it, that's a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All's a favor?
Aight.
So, it's clear, you might wanna talk about the ADU with the building, with the zoning force law, so that way you've got that clarified, too?
Yes.
And we're gonna make change on your application?
Yes, yeah, I'll...
Well, the application doesn't say anything, that's...
I agree.
Mary Ann, why don't you write that down, and I'll take a look at the application, and we can make some amendments to it.
And any other helpful...
Sure, I'm happy to take a look at it as well.
Things that might have been overlooked.
Do you need Counselor to sign anything? So, alright, so I don't have to wait? Alright. Alright, so, four regular members, and Charlie will be the next one, correct me if I'm wrong, the last one was George, and the next one will be 68 Nicoletta's Way, right?
Got it.
Charlie, could you read that into the record, please?
I will, 68 Nicoletta Way, Unit K. Petitioners, Sunny Paws Rescue, Inc., requests a modification to an existing special permit, SP 0290, to allow for a change of use as a domestic charitable corporation kennel with outdoor yard pursuant to 17424 C9C and 17425 E7 of the zoning bylaws on property located in an I-1 zoning district and light industrial overlay district, map 26, parcel 19K, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, Sham Shack LLC.
Counselor. Good evening, again, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, Attorney Christopher Corain, representing the applicant, Sunny Paws Rescue, Inc. With...
That is Tony...
Sunny Paws Rescue, she is filing for a modification to an existing special permit for a unit, Unit K, which is located in, I don't know what they, they're commercial condo units at the end of Nicoletta's Way. I think there's probably 13 or 14 of them total, three different buildings, this is one particular unit. When these buildings were originally built, I think the original special permit was simply just for warehouse type uses, so, that's not what we're seeking here. We're specifically seeking the domestic charitable corporation kennel. So, that's what we're applying for, as a modification to the existing, which is allowed in the I-1 zoning district upon the grant of a special permit by this board. Sunny Paws Rescue is exactly what it sounds like, it is, they rescue dogs primarily from Texas and look to rehome them. So, it's not a daycare, it's not any, they don't take in just the published dogs, they, you know, house them as rescue dogs and then find homes for them, so... Typically, you could see six to 12 dogs in the building at any one time, but there also can be times when they don't have any dogs in there. So, it's kind of sporadic because of the nature of it, where, again, it's not a doggy daycare, it's a, you know, a kennel for rescue dogs. So, there is also a request for outdoor use for the dogs, which has to be part of the special permit. If you look at the photos that I provided of the unit, there is already a fenced-in area that's part of the unit where these dogs would be allowed to go outside, so that they wouldn't just be traveling around the whole complex, there's actually an already existing fenced-in area for those dogs to use. And again, those are in the photographs that I provided to the board as part of my application. So, with any request for a special permit, the board needs to find that there will not be any adverse effect on public health or safety, not cause excessive demand on community facilities, will not significantly decrease surface or groundwater quality or air quality, will not have a significant... will not have a significant adverse impact on wildlife habitat, estuary systems, traffic flow, traffic safety, waterways, fisheries, public land or neighboring properties, will not cause excessive levels of noise, vibrations, electro disturbance, radioactivity or glare, you know, will not destroy or disrupt any species listed as rare, endangered, or threatened by Massachusetts Natural Heritage. You know, I think the nature of this particular use, you know, will not have any of those detrimental effects. Again, we're in an industrial zone. I did, as part of my application, also provide you with the GIS from the town that shows you our units here, you know, there's the ball fields here, any residential is way off up here, and there's certainly lots of vegetation in between the unit and any neighboring residential properties, which are, as I say, significantly off, you know, far from the property. And again, this is all, it's all, you know, commercial activity goes on here. We have contractors and the like that, you know, generally work nine to five, you know, Monday through Friday, so I don't, you know, trucks are coming in and out of here, so there's already a level of commercial activity going in and out of this. I don't see that, you know, having this particular use is going to negatively affect, you know, the ongoing operations there or exacerbate, you know, any of the typical commercial activities that you already see on site. You know, no different, I know this board has approved a doggy daycare on Evergreen, and this is, I would suggest, less intensive with that, because again, you know, it's not, we don't have sixty dogs here as a doggy daycare, you know, six to twelve dogs at the most. And again, I'm here, Tony's here as well with any, you know, to answer any questions.
So, why don't we read letters into the record, please?
The Conservation Department, July 9th, 2025. Unit K, 68 Nicoletta Way, not within wetlands jurisdiction. And the Board of Health comments, 68 Nicoletta Way, Unit K, make sure to apply for kennel license with clerk's office and police department, work with animal control officer.
Is that the extent of them? Okay.
Board questions?
I got a few.
Shoot.
I imagine they're gonna be overnight stays, then, right?
Yes.
Six to twelve. Any supervision there?
Yeah. Tony, you wanna answer those questions?
So, we will be staffed...
We need your name.
Oh, sorry. My name's Toni Eaton.
I was supposed to say that.
I'm sorry.
It's okay, go ahead.
I overstepped my bounds.
You're late.
Sorry. I apologize, sorry.
That's okay. So, great question. Sometimes there will be someone there overnight if there, if we do have a lot of dogs. If not, then there won't be. There will be times I will make sure that it is on camera, that I have access to 24/7. I'm fifteen minutes away. If there was ever any kind of problem, I would be there within fifteen minutes.
Do you separate the little dogs from the big dogs?
Yes.
Because dogs can tend to fight.
Yes, we would be very careful about that.
Okay.
Rescued eight hundred and ninety-six dogs and saved them from euthanasia to date.
Excellent.
Yeah, I'd like to say that this isn't Toni just dipping her toe into this type of business. She's already, you know, this is already her business. It's just a new location, basically.
So, for the most part, the dogs are gonna be staying inside, at least at night?
They'll be in at night, yes.
What about noise and neighboring businesses?
So, that's a very good question, 'cause noise would be a concern. We will not have a high volume of dogs, and they will be there for a very short time. It's just a stop in their pathway to a happy life in a residential home. Again, it will be monitored by cameras, and if there is any noise at all, I will be there within fifteen minutes to rectify.
Okay. You mentioned in the special permit about affecting natural resources like water. How about dog waste outside in the pen? How are you gonna handle that?
The dog waste will be removed concurrently with every visit outside. If there is a higher volume, we will hire a professional waste removal company.
It's about really all you have.
How are you funded?
We are funded privately. We do not get any governmental assistance. We do a lot of philanthropic efforts, and we raise a lot of money.
I only asked that question because one of your answers was, "We'll hire someone to do this or do that." I mean, it requires dollars and cents to hire people, especially in today's world. It's awful hard to hire people because people are so busy. I just wanna make sure that you are well-funded, in case... I envision the following, that if the dog, if one of your dogs or more than one is loud, you're gonna get a call, and if you're not there, somebody's gonna get there and take care of the issue.
Right.
And if I'm sitting in the audience and I have a piece of property nearby of this location, even though it is industrial, I still wanna make sure my investment is solid and is, and I'm not in a situation where I'm hearing dogs all night long.
Understood.
I'm a big-time dog lover, huge, right? Had one my whole life, and I will continue to have one until the day I die, but, you know, our job at this board is to make sure that we deal with, you know, issues of abutters, et cetera. So, we wanna make sure the last thing we need is, you know, these dogs that are constantly barking. So, I mean, I think that probably is gonna be one of our, for me, it's one of my, it's my issue and how I can deal with that. I mean, is the inside of this building at night somewhat soundproofed?
That's one of the things that we're gonna be working with a professional kennel company who's gonna set up our kennels, and that will be at the top of the list to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to minimize any internal noise.
So, let me give you a little help, because I've had to deal with so much sound in my life, because I build condominiums and things. You wanna have like an STC of sound transmission coefficient probably in the seventies. At that point in time, if you did have that, and it could be done inside that building, in my opinion, you're not gonna get probably complaints, even if they are barking. And so, that would be a very important thing to me as one member of this board, because frankly, I don't wanna hear about complaints after something that we've approved. And yet, I still understand what you're doing, and I think it's spectacular. And I do what I can to help you get there, but I also have to protect other people that have invested in the abutting property. So, that being said, I think one of the conditions, if we were to get to that point, would be we need to understand how are you gonna create a situation where it's gonna be sound deadened or at least sound STC of an area of a magnitude that it's not gonna create a problem for the abutters. I think that's probably gonna be one of the bigger issues.
So, would you like something almost akin to like, like when we do stormwater management in commerce, like a management plan?
Yeah, I mean, I...
That can be reviewed by the building...
Yeah, something like that. I think, I really believe that's probably gonna be, during the day, I think that's probably less of an issue if they're in the backyard, and they do bark a little bit. I don't think in that zone, although I haven't listened to the public, maybe it is an issue during the day, but certainly at night, nobody's gonna wanna hear a dog.
Right.
Okay? And I get that, because if my business were next door and I was selling, like, Cavendry or something, I wouldn't want my clients listening to a dog all day long, right? So, I think that's still important in an industrial zone. And it's part of the special permit, anyway. It says noise, right?
Yep.
It's certainly part of the application. Again, being tried, I would love to work with you and get this thing done, but I think we need, but it's certain we need to get it done in such a manner that we don't create a problem for abutters.
I think, I think we could condition it on a soundproofing plan approved by the building commissioner.
Does that be all with you, David?
Is that okay with you, David?
Good.
I just have a couple more questions. And again, I'm with Ron, a huge dog person, so I really approve what you're doing. Only particular concern, maybe at night, nobody's there, are the dogs separated? Is, I can imagine a dog fight.
They will be single-use kennels.
So, they'll be separated from all the other dogs?
Hundred percent.
And there was a floor plan that I submitted as part of the application, so you can see that, too.
Is seven...
Yes, there is.
There it is. Yep.
Is there a max amount of dogs that are allowed in a kennel? I mean, could you put two thousand? No? That's a health question, no, but I think... Must be some regulations on this.
You wanna condition it, David? What is the maximum you see as dogs?
I know that the other, the other place... Evergreen? That he, it was like forty.
Yeah. What do you see maximum amount of dogs staying in this?
Twelve.
Twelve. So, if we were to condition a maximum amount of dogs of being twelve, and I presume you don't do cats?
No, I'm not licensed for cats.
So, you only do dogs?
Only dogs.
So, we condition on only dogs and a maximum of twelve. Are you okay with that?
I would be.
That works for me.
How many, it sounds like you've done these before. How many have you done?
How many?
Well, how many shelters like this? Have you either created a bit of a...
Well, I work a lot with the Humane Society, and we kinda use them as our guide, you know, following their procedures and their, their kinda, the way they operate.
Okay.
And kind of taking that information so we can do, be a best practice. We don't wanna be the biggest, we just wanna keep saving lives. And we just need somewhere that we can go, we're foster-based now, we have fosters all across the state, but we always need to have a place if our fosters are full. That's why this building will, it will hardly ever be at capacity, and if it is, it's gonna be for a short time.
Just a...
Do we need to put any language of Board of Health checking it every so often, like once a year?
There must be. There are board out regulations, 'cause they gotta get a permit.
I'm sure they do that, and we have K-9 officers as well.
Animal control...
The Board of Health letter said that they have to...
I've been to kennels, I've been to the other building more once, even as a building official, so...
Are there any state permits?
We're licensed by the Mass. Department of Agriculture. We have to renew our license every year, and my understanding is that you apply annually for your kennel license, in which the animal control officer under the police department comes in and inspects your building, looks at how your procedures are going, your sanitary, all of that, before they reissue your permit for the next year.
Okay.
Are you a rescue operation? Is that what you're calling yourself? Yeah, I have a rescue dog, so I know how that works. So, when you obtain the animals that you obtained for your kennel, they're brought in from someplace else to your...
Mostly from the southern states. Massachusetts requires they go into a forty-eight-hour quarantine at a mass-licensed quarantine facility that you have to be contracted with. We do all of our isolation in Dartmouth.
Do you have a vet that you work with relative to the animals?
We have a few vets, yes.
And the people who come interested in adopting a dog, do they come to the kennel?
Well, right now, we're foster-based, so they have to be approved. We do not let anybody meet our dogs until they've gone through the approval process.
Okay. Once they've done that, though, where do they meet the dog?
At the foster's home.
Okay. Okay. So, you'd actually bring the dog out to their house?
No, right now, they come to the foster's home to meet the dog.
Okay.
But if, if we had one of the dogs at our facility, they would come to our facility.
Hmm, okay.
Is there adequate parking, Counselor, out there?
Yes.
Would you say yes? Maybe a better way to ask is, how many parking spaces are there? Only because you're gonna, hopefully you have ten people in your parking lot that's gonna look to take ten dogs.
No, we wouldn't do that. It would be by appointment only.
There's not gonna be many, much.
So, there wouldn't, it wouldn't be a big parking issue?
No.
Okay, so, that's fine, then.
No, when I went through the process, I did it with the group over in Thelma, and at most, there was one other car, there was somebody interested in meeting a dog. They don't want ten or twelve people in there dealing with dogs, and it can't work.
No.
It's overwhelming for the dogs.
If you go, if you go to the, this facility, I mean, the parking's kind of ill-defined, I guess, it's not like there's like stripes.
Well, it doesn't sound like you're gonna have a parking issue.
Yeah, you can park anywhere on that site.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we go to the audience, I'd like to hear what they have to say. Does that make sense?
Sure.
All right, we're gonna go to the audience, I'd like to hear what the audience would have to say, just so we understand what their concerns are. So, anyone in the audience like to speak about this application? Yes, sir. Come on up, if you can give me your name and your involvement, et cetera, and your concerns, that would be great.
Address.
Yes, yeah, address, too.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Roy Ritchie, and I'm a director abutter. I have multiple units down there on 68 Nicoletta's Way. We have several concerns. I'm also one of the trustees for Nicoletta's Way Condo Trust. One of the big concerns, obviously, is gonna be the noise. Unit J, which has outside storage area, which directly abuts the proposed area, my tenants have their office right there, which faces directly into the proposed area. They're there during the day doing, you know, their clerical work for their business, and I'm, I'm really concerned about the noise aspect. We talked about extra traffic. Unit K, I believe, has three parking spots assigned to it. Each unit has various parking spots, some have more, some have less. So, I'm not quite sure if parking would be an issue, but there is a lot of commercial vehicles down there already. It is built for commercial tradesmen, you know, carpentists, you know, electricians, that type of operation down there. I'm just not sure, in my opinion, that a kennel would be conducive or beneficial in that area. Again, I do have three units down there, so I'm speaking times three, so I'm worried about my property value, you know, decreasing if someone was to come down and if I was gonna put one of my units for sale. Now, there is a wooded area, and there are some residential properties behind it. The problem is, is we are now in the process of proposing clearing a lot of that area out, because we have additional parking down there. It might, it might be boat storage in the future. So, that buffer, at some point, might be gone, obviously with approvals from the town and what we wanna do down there, so I have some concerns about the neighborly, the neighbors beyond the field, that that buffer is gonna be removed, and that's gonna be gone. So, again, I have a rescue myself, and I've always had rescues. I'm just worried about the noise, the dogs out there, and even just odors and removal. You brought up good points about how many numbers of dogs, twelve. Who monitors that? Soundproofing, which you talked about, you were gonna put some, a proposal together so you could see exactly, and, you know, what guarantees do we have as owners down there that all these things are gonna be complied with? And a lot of things, you already talked about, the traffic and the Board of Health getting involved. So, there is twelve units down there, total. There's six across the way, the side that they're proposing has four units, there's a fenced-in area, another fenced-in storage, and then goes Unit K, and then on, K.I. So, being an owner down there, I'm just respectfully requesting that the modification not be allowed.
Thank you very much for your input. Anyone else in the audience like to come up and speak? Yes, sir, come on up, give me your name, address, your involvement, et cetera, please. cetera, please.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Charles King. I'm the owner of 68 Nicoletta's Way, Unit E. I apologize for any visible nerves. I'm not a great public speaker. Um, I, I, I am also concerned with, um, this particular type of business coming into this area. I've been a business, a business owner in that area for almost 10 years, um, and had an extremely enjoyable experience with that property. We have, um, a completely cohesive property. Um, my wife runs my office. I know that a few of my neighbors also have offices there. Um, it's an area that I feel comfortable bringing my wife down to, knowing that she can have a nice, quiet business environment, professionally handle phone calls. Um, I would be concerned with allowing the activity. We're in very close proximity to each other as far as unit owners. Um, and being that we do have a public dog park across the park, uh, I mean, I can clearly audibly hear the dogs barking from the dog park on, on a sunny day. I can't imagine what that would sound like just across the parking lot. Um, I'm not interested in having my customers hear dog barking in the background when my wife is fielding phone calls.
What is your business, sir?
My business is parking lines.
Parking lots?
Parking lines.
Parking lots, thank you.
Yep. So, that's important to me, to maintain a professional image. We've been in business for 42 years, and I have never had dogs barking chronically in the background and don't intend to, to have that. So out of property value, I, I would be very concerned if there is an attractive nuisance there for noise. I have a real estate agent showing the property to somebody on the wrong day at the wrong time. You know, they're gonna put two and two together and that guy's gonna walk. Um, I do also have concerns with my wife and my family spending time down there. I do wanna, I, I, I look long and hard for a home for my business where we could grow, um, and, and have a pleasurable experience growing the business. I don't want any source of aggravation, noise, uh, anything down there. We're all very respectful for, for ourselves. Um, we, we're able to communicate with each other. When you're talking animals, you know, there's no communication. I am concerned with the nature of the dogs coming in, being that they are rescued. They're not people's pets. They're not trained. They're from duress situations, probably have traveled for a week to get up here. I speak from my heart. My family has rescued dogs personally from Texas. We've rescued cats from Texas, and I believe her heart is in the right place. And I commend that. There needs to be more of these things around, but honestly, this is just not the place. It's too close proximity to people who have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars to professionally run their businesses. And, um, we did not sign up for buying properties next door to a kennel. Um, that concerns me. Uh, the other thing that concerns me, I can speak from direct experience. I live in a neighboring town where there's a hobby kennel, and there's only six to 12 dogs on her property, and it's in much further proximities. These are over acre lots, and they're wooded, and the noise has created lawsuits in that neighborhood, um, and it is a problem. Um, again, I, I, I do appreciate what she's doing because I've personally rescued dogs, and I believe that everybody should rescue dogs and not buy them from breeders. That was a problem. But I'm here to protect my property value, my family's well-being, at my place of business, my business image when we're fielding phone calls from the public. Um, I believe that these properties need to be in areas where they're not impacting people directly. I don't think I would ever operate my business impacting people directly. We wouldn't own it in a condominium association. I'd be seeking a, a separate parcel to do my thing. Um, and we don't have that down there. It's been a wonderful 10 years. It's been a great experience. My property value has, has gone up and up with the sales of the units that have come up for sale, and I don't want that to freeze and start going backwards with, um, in my opinion, foreseeable nuisance that, that would be moving in there. From my personal experience, I'm not just suggesting. I am talking from experience. Um, so I, I, I appreciate the board letting us talk on this. Uh, I really do, because I think the conversation is the way to get the best results. Um, so I do appreciate your time, and I do appreciate.
Thank you very much for your input. We will take it into consideration. Others in the audience? Yes, sir. If you can give your name, address, um, anything else, be my guest.
Ralph Alferi, 68 E Nicoletta's Way and 68 I Nicoletta's Way. Um, my wife and I have two units down there. Um, I have a little list of things I, I agree with the two previous gentlemen. Um, we feel it's a risk to our investments in the property. Uh, we have three parking spaces per unit, and the parking is always full. Um, it would be a noise disruption, odor, and sanitation concerns for the units and residential neighbors. We have safety and liability concerns. Um, the pens, I have two pens there. They're not very large spaces. They're in full sun. Um, I think it could be detrimental to the health of the animals. I also believe there's a lack of other I-1 zone properties available. Uh, I know kennels are allowed, red kennels are allowed in C1, C2, and C3, in addition to, uh, I-1. I-1 space is very hard to come by for trades, not of other, other tradespeople, other services.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input. We'll take it into consideration. Yes, sir, if you can give your name, address?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Mike Travers. I am an owner at 68 Nicoletta's Way. Uh, I also am a dog lover and owner rescue, and this has nothing to do with that whatsoever. Uh, this is a dead-end road, and, uh, one of the reasons that I chose to invest here was because of that. The lack of, uh, you know, foot traffic and vehicle traffic, uh, as these guys have already said, and they've touched on most of the points here. We have a very cohesive relationship with each other. We watch out for each other's things. Uh, we have very limited space down there, and, uh, I, I think that this would be, um, a detriment to that. Uh, I don't want to echo everything that they just said, but, um, I just want to go on the record that I oppose this.
Okay. Thank you very much for your input. Um, so, sir, if you want, if, as long as it's new, and we haven't heard it, if you want to say something new, that's great. No problem. Won't happen here again, as long as it's new and hasn't been told.
I just wanted to just.
No, you'd have to come up to the mic. Again, as long as it's new. Perfect.
Again, Roy Ritchie, 68 Nicoletta's Way. I mentioned earlier that I own three units down there. I just don't want you to think I'm just a renter. The, one, I occupy one of the units down there, and I am down there full-time running my business out of there, and I have several offices in there that we work out of. So I'm just not the landlord speaking on behalf of my tenants. I'm a tenant owner down there.
And what's your business?
Multi-state restoration.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none. Thank you very much. All right, so, counselor, you want to wrap it up?
Yeah, I, I don't want to be dismissive of the neighbors' concerns. Obviously, you know, things like noise are legitimate. Things like property values are not zoning concerns. They're not part of your bylaw. So, you know, I, I question that, you know, I don't even think it should be part of the equation, which the board considers. It's not part of the special permit criteria. Um, you know, as far as the noise is concerned, we're obviously willing to put a plan in place, uh, that can be reviewed by the building department, uh, to reduce the noise. I mean, this is an industrial zone district, and these are commercial activities. You know, this is what goes on in these areas. I, you know, I'm sorry that, you know, that they all are golfing buddies, you know, and they're all happy with each other. I don't know why Tony can't be part of that, you know? Um, as, she's done this before. I think she's very happy to engage with any of the stakeholders there, uh, to be a good neighbor. Again, we're not having 60 some odd dogs, uh, that are gonna be, you know, running around. They're all gonna be in that enclosed area, uh, so they're not gonna be running around the parking lot. I went over there and took pictures. I could've found a parking space anywhere over there during the day. Um, so, you know, I'm a little suspect of claiming that there's no parking available there. As I said, I went there, had no problem finding a parking space. Uh, you know, a lot of these, uh, you know, businesses are contractors that go out for the day. Um, so there's not like there's, uh, you know, it's not a shopping center where everybody parks there and stays there all day. Um, you know, again, I, you know, it is a lot in the I-1 with the special permit. If you can't do it in the I-1, where can you do it? And, again, you allow a doggy daycare center on Evergreen. There's a restaurant across the street at Cape Cod Coffee. Uh, there's other businesses there. There's the, the stillery, and, you know, I think that, you know, it seems that, you know, the people, uh, there, you know, all seem to make it work. Um, you know, there are stop, uh, you know, stopgaps for the town, you know, whether it's the building department to enforce these things. I assume that if we provide a soundproofing plan, and that that plan is not implemented, that they will not get a certificate of occupancy for that building, um, if it's not done in accordance with what the building department is, uh, requiring. Uh, there's, uh, the police department with the animal, uh, control officer, and the health department that all have the ability to enforce the town bylaws. And again, I'm sure Tony would be more than happy to provide our contact information to any one of the neighbors if there were any issues. Uh, they will all be enclosed, so I think that, you know, the safety issues are, uh, you know, well, uh, taken care of by them being in the pen. I don't suspect they're, you know, walking around the, the parking lot unattended or a federal. So, you know, with that, I think, you know, again, this is an I-1 zoning district. It's an industrial district. By special permit, this is one of the allowed uses, and, you know, I think that a lot of this is just speculation, and I think it can be a, a good thing for the community, uh, in this area.
Okay. David, have you got anything to say?
Oh, from a zoning aspect, I don't have a single issue with this proposal.
Okay. Howard, sir, as long as it's new, please?
New.
Okay, come on up. If you can give your name again and, um...
I don't want to keep hearing over and over stuff. Again, Mike Travers. Uh, I just want to respond to what the counselor had said. Uh, number one, I've never hung out with any of these guys, not a single time. That's number one. Uh, two, I have six staff, office staff, that work there all day, every day. They don't leave for the day. They're there on the phones, conducting business and talking with customers on a regular basis.
What is your business?
Eco geek pest control.
Okay.
Uh, my business relies heavily on working on the phones. That's our primary, uh, one of the things that we do there. Um, and as far as parking, if, if the counselor went there during the day, then he went there when we were all out working. Parking is a major problem down there. We're constantly communicating with each other to make sure that we're not stepping on each other's toes and taking up space. So, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir. It's gotta be, it's gotta be new, 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 please.
Charles King.
And please be to the point, if you could.
68 Nicoletta's Way, Unit E. I did, um, fail to ask you guys, that when she was doing her proposal, I heard that those are all fostering. I didn't hear that there was actually a kennel like this that she has run. And if there is, I'd like to know what her management plan is, because from what I heard, it was all fostering. So I'd be a little concerned that this is kind of experimental, and she's not used to running a facility like this if everybody's being fostered right now. So that would concern me a little bit, meaning that this would be like a starter thing. And if she does have facilities like this, are they in tight quarters with condominiums? If they're just at people's houses with one or two dogs, that's not remotely what she's used to managing. So if there's six to 12 dogs in a facility, I've only heard barking management for inside the building. I'm concerned with outside the building. My wife goes there and works all day, and I don't golf with these guys. I golf with my kids.
Point taken, and we'll see how the board reacts.
So I would be concerned with it. This is experimental.
Right. Thank you very much. All right, how would the board like to move forward with this?
I have some concerns.
Okay. Do you want to discuss them? Do you want to, how would you like to?
Well, I'm not, Mike, not really sure. Uh, I've heard a lot of pushback, and people have bought businesses down there. They own condominiums. They work on the phones. I'm not sure I'm really concerned about parking. I don't have any parking. How often is somebody gonna show up on an appointment? I'm not worried about that at all.
Me neither.
I'm extremely worried about dogs outside. Can't control the barking. I have a dog that barks all the time. I love the dog, but he barks all the time. And inside, I don't know. There's businesses here, and I don't want to see those businesses disrupted. So, I love what she's doing. I'm not sure it's the right place for it.
Why don't I go around though, Charlie? What is your opinion? And we'll vote certainly, but I just.
Well, as far as the sound, the inside sound can be taken care of. It could be contingent upon, um, Dave approving a sound system inside, um, that works, okay? Um, outside, you've heard what the problems are that people have, but I can't imagine, I can't, I may be wrong, that the owner's gonna have all 12 dogs outside in a kennel all day long. Uh, it's something that doesn't work for the dogs, uh, and it would create noise. I, you know, the noise is the principal problem. I think the noise could be taken care of. Uh, the number of dogs, 12, seems to me to be a manageable number, you know, in, in a place such as this. So, uh, and if, if, if the dogs are making too much noise, we have an animal control officer, you know, in the town. And all it takes is a telephone call to the animal control officer, who may do something relative to your license to keep these dogs there. But somebody has to make the complaint first. People are making the complaint before the dogs are barking, you know? That's what bothers me.
I know you're, you have.
I'm, I'm in favor of granting.
I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement totally with Charlie. Totally with all of his points as well.
No, you're not sitting, George. Please give us your input.
My input would be that, you know, that I think this should go forward. There's no reason for it not. What I've heard is really a lot of, if you will, information about businesses that are, could, could be affected, maybe affected. Will they will or not be, there is a, there is a solution, and that's the, uh, animal control officer in town. So I don't know what the issue is.
Sharon?
Well, I just, I, I feel, and I have a neighbor that lives at least 300 feet away from me, and in the winter, when the windows are closed, I can hear their dog barking. So I, I, I can, when their dog is outside. So these people on there are on top of each other. I, I have, I have mixed feelings. I'm not, but I understand a, a dog that lives 300 feet away from me, I can hear in the winter, when they're, when it's outside.
I understand you. You're in a residential neighborhood there in an industrial park.
Yes. No, I'm just saying that, that I, I can understand the noise issue.
Counselor, I'm, I'm swinging in the breeze here. I'm going back and forth because I understand the need. I get it, but I also understand the people that spoke. I get that too, right? My investment was sitting out there. I'd make certain, so.
Investment is not your, investment is not your concern, and it's not a zoning concern.
I, I understand. I understand. Um, it's not my concern. I won't say that again.
No.
Well, I, I could, so how can we be protected?
Well, again.
Heard them. How are, how are those things about barking outside, how, how is that not gonna take place?
Well, again, I can let Tony speak to the outside. Again, we've, you know, agreed to an indoor, you know, plan. I don't know if you can, uh, what's, like, it's all chain link fence where the outside is. I don't know if you can put some kind of barrier around that chain, or through the inside of that chain link fence, which may, uh, soften the noise to some degree. But again, as Charlie and George said, there are, there are ways that the town handles these things if it's, if it's such a, a problem.
I know, but this board stack has never been just to approve something based on the town's gonna, to, you know, oversee it and be in police it. I mean, that's, I don't want to create a policing nightmare for this community.
I understand that.
But there's an allowed use. That's what we have to look at.
Well, it's allowed use subject to a special permit.
Correct.
And special permits have a lot of authority given to this board, and this board can say no to the special permit.
Whatever. I know it's.
I get it. I, I.
Not going anywhere, so.
Well.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chair, I think, you know, given the, the concerns of the neighbors, um, I think Tony feels that maybe it's best just to withdraw it.
Okay. I hope that you find something else.
Oh, I will.
Fantastic. I think that this probably location may not have been the best. But you know what? Whatever I can do personally, I'm more than happy to do so.
Thank you.
And Counselor, share my cellphone with her, and I'm serious. Whatever you need, whether it be location, approvals, whatever, more than happy to help you.
I appreciate that.
This is, this probably is just not the best location.
I think we consider, the problem is, you don't know what's gonna happen.
No, that's true. And I think if, you know, you already have a situation where, you know, I think what Tony's fear is, is that, you know, you're coming into a situation where your neighbors are already against you, so.
And serious, give her my.
I will.
Whatever, and whatever I can do to help. So I thank you very much for your, so.
Just withdraw without prejudice.
Would you like to make a motion to accept the applicant's, uh, request for a withdrawal without prejudice?
So moved to accept the applicant's request to withdraw.
Second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Good luck.
Thank you, whatever I can do.
Good luck.
I get it. I don't either, I guess.
Yep.
Do you have one more?
I agree with your comments. All right.
Okay.
We're gonna maybe set a record here tonight?
Set a.
Very torn on that one.
All right. So sitting in this one will be four regular members, I guess, and George?
Yep.
George, could you read 389 Monomoskoy into the record, please?
389 Monomoskoy, Monomoskoy Road. Owner's Kim Serine requests a special permit under 174, 117 dash 1 and 174 dash 33 of the zoning bylaws. Raise an existing single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on a property located in R3 zoning district, map 128, parcel 2, MFP Mass.
Uh-oh. I've already looked at it extensively. I, I kind of understand it pretty well.
Good evening again, members of the board. For the record, District Chair, members of the board, for the record. Attorney Christopher Corrigan, representing Kim Serine, 389 Monomoskoy Road. With me tonight is Brad from JC Engineering. He's the engineer for the project. Would certainly be happy to answer any stormwater management questions that the board has on this project. Uh, again, this, this is a raise and replace under 174 dash 17.1 and 174 dash 33. Uh, we're located on Monomoskoy Island, R3 zoning district, which, as the board knows, minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, minimum lot frontage is 150 feet, front yard setback of 40 feet, side and rear 15 feet, lock coverage 20% max, building height max of 35 feet. And as always, we have a 50-foot set. And as always, we have a 50-foot setback to wetland. And this particular lot is wholly located within flood zone. So we're 100% in the flood zone. That gives us three non-conformities. We are non-conforming as to lot area for zoning purposes, zero square feet. We're non-conforming as to setback to wetlands, zero square feet, and our lock coverage is 100%. Again, we're wholly within 100, within the flood zone. There are other, no other non-conformities. So the front, the side, the rear, all conform to today's current zoning and will continue to be, you know, if this project were to be approved by the board. As a percentage of total lot area, kind of, as they say, I hate to use it, but the old method, the existing lock coverage is 5.3%. The effective area of this lot is 34,000 square feet. So we have 34,000 square feet of upland. So your existing lock coverage, old method, 5.3%, that will be increased under the old method to 11.6%, still well under the 20% threshold that we would normally review in the R3 zoning district. The home will be building code compliant and it will be flood zone compliant. It has been approved by the Conservation Commission. Is a significant and substantial mitigation as part of this project, which, you know, Brad can certainly attest to this year before it has any questions. The existing house, other than the flood zone, the next closest was the Salt Marsh. The proposed house actually being moved further away from the Salt Marsh, which is always, which is a good thing. An IA septic system is proposed as part of this project. Again, Brad can explain the stormwater management, but that is proposed for roof runoff. There are no new non-conformities. And as always, I provide pictures of surrounding neighborhood. This board has reviewed many a project on Monomoskoy Island and this is certainly consistent with, you know, the redevelopment that's been approved by this board in the past. So again, I would stress for this project, under your raise and replace bylaw, no new non-conformities can be created. There are no new non-conformities. Sufficient parking. It's a residential zone, two parking spaces, sufficient parking. And the last one is that it will not be substantially more detrimental than what currently exists in the neighborhood. The existing house does not have an IA system. It is not flood zone compliant, is not building code compliant. The new, the new house will be building code compliant, it will be flood zone compliant, it will have an IA system. It has been reviewed by the Conservation Commission and we're within lock coverage tolerances that you would generally accept for development in the R3 zoning district. We're moving further away from the Salt Marsh. Again, I'm probably repeating myself, it's been approved by Conservation and it's consistent with, you know, redevelopment that's been approved by this board and to the neighborhood. So with that, you know, I think it is a project that this board can approve and would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So Charlie, could you read the letters into the record, please?
Yep. We have Board of Health and we have Conservation Board of Health. 389 Monomoskoy Road. Septic is designed for five bedrooms, study and rec room with doors make six bedrooms. Variants from bylaw chapter 108 will be needed for more than four bedrooms. New plans for 389 Monomoskoy sent electronically, 7/8/25, showcased openings on study and rec room house to be four bedroom. Conservation, 389 Monomoskoy Road. Resource areas, LSCSF and buffer zone to Salt Marsh. Notice of intent application was approved by the commission with a vote of four to one due to increase in building setback from edge of Salt Marsh. Large increase in mitigation plantings, creation of naturally vegetated buffer strip, replanting of trees removed and IA septic system installation under the following conditions. Dwelling reduced to four bedrooms. Weaver from regulation 25. LSCSF submitted prior to construction. Reduce lawn to 10% of overall lot size and three-year monitoring mitigation contract with a qualified professional.
So I'd just like to note on the bedroom issue with the Board of Health, as he noted originally, he was reading it as having five bedrooms or six bedrooms.
Yeah.
We resubmitted plans yesterday to him. That's why you have the secondary note saying that it's a four bedroom.
So you have a secondary note in the folder?
Yeah, he, Charlie read it.
All right. So the secondary note trumps the first note?
Correct.
Yep.
And those plans that we submitted to Zach, the health agent, are part of, should be part of what you have for the building.
Well, let's make service.
These the new plans?
They should show the rec room and study, not.
Do they show a revision on them? Did you put a revision on that?
It has a.
There you go.
Please tell me they've got it. No. How about the site?
Yeah, these are correct because it shows the five case opening and no doors.
Correct. Yes.
So did your plan, did you put a revision on it, though?
It's, it's already listed on there. Yes.
So you did put a revision. Why don't architects do the same damn thing and put a revision on their plans?
I don't know. So what are we supposed to guess?
Right.
But you do have a revision on that plan.
But that would be the one you signed.
Yeah.
Right. So you do have a revision on your plans, actual revision and such and such.
Yeah. All right. All right. And again, Brad Bertola with J.C. Engineering for the record. We did, it is that the Conservation Commission limited the property to four bedrooms. They looked at a cumulative effect.
Right.
And because this lot is under 40,000 square feet, you would need a variance if we were to design for more. We originally.
We'd need a Board of Health area.
Board of Health area, yes. We originally designed for a five-bedroom septic system, but we always proposed a four-bedroom house. The issue was some of the rooms had like a double door into the study and that kind of like bonus room above a garage.
So Conservation now is doing nitrogen evaluation?
They have always had that in their regulations, but yes, in this case.
I got you. That's up to them.
So I just wanted to have Brad clarify. The plan, the site plan that you have now, is this, do we have to change this for the size of the septic or is it all set?
So as part of the Conservation approval, they wanted a revised site plan submitted, which happened to be today, to address some changes. One of those changes was that the site, new site plan needs to meet regulation 31 of the Conservation regulations, which states that you can't have more than 10% grass on the property. The lot itself had probably 19,000 square feet of grass areas, not Fenway Park grass, but areas that, areas that potentially could be subject to nitrogen fertilizer by future property.
So do these site plans depict 10,000 or less?
So the site plan that I resubmitted to the Conservation Commission highlighted areas to limit where grass would be proposed. The rest of the site plan is just called out for natural.
Is that these plans? I just want to make sure we've got the correct plans. When I sign them, that's the plan you got to follow.
I think this is going to be in the same situation as a prior hearing. We unfortunately, you know, timeframe wise and only meeting once a month, this application was submitted to meet today's deadline. The Conservation Commission approved it with changes that needed, well, it was easier to show on a revised plan than try to guess in the future. Just, let's just show it on a revised plan so there's no questions in the future.
So the long and the short is you're going to be doing a new plan that you're going to want someone from this board or this board to approve prior to the next meeting.
Well, what I, right. So what I would suggest is the same condition we had, that our specific, for the changes specifically required by Conservation, which is lawn area and the septic size being reduced to four bedrooms, those two changes only on a revised site plan can be approved by the, by the chair.
I'm willing to work with you because we're on a short scheduled period. I'm okay with that.
But I understand that any other changes.
As long as the rest of the board is, I'm okay with that.
But any other changes, as usual, would have to come back.
I get you. I do have, because we, I know you like plans ahead of time, I only have one hard copy of the plan that was submitted to Conservation, which was requested by the Conservation.
Oh, so that's great. So we have the plan that you believe.
I have it right here that can submit. It may not be the same plan.
It's not the same one as you have, but it is the most revised.
Here's my point. That needs to be signed by me if this board approves and votes to approve your application. That's what I want to sign.
I can submit this. I'm not, I don't have enough copies if you wanted more. I have no.
Could you do me a favor? Give that to this lady right here, Mary Ann. And Mary Ann, that's the one you want me to make sure you stamp and I sign? That's the record plan?
Yes.
You feel confident that's going to be approved? So understand, if that isn't the plan approved by Conservation, you got a problem.
Yeah, we'll have to follow up on it.
Yeah, I'm assuming I addressed everything.
So we're going to presume that's the plan that's going to be approved by Conservation?
Right. That's fair enough.
Condition it on that being approved.
Okay. So that's fine.
And surveyor and engineer on it.
Are there any other documents that need to be read in the record?
No, there aren't. In the motion, though, the only plans that are mentioned in the motion are plans other than that plan.
We're going to put that plan in the motion.
Right. So probably the only thing you need to do is when you read that plan is add Brad's revision date.
I'll, it's, I'll go over with you. It'll be fine. So that being said, so board questions?
I just want you, if you would.
I looked at the plan extensively.
Address the runoff of the.
Very impressed with your design of roof catchment. But I have a question and that is what, what storm velocity you designed to?
So it's, we submitted these calculations as part of the Conservation application. It is a 10-year storm, which in this area, based on NOAA Atlas 14, which has a higher predicted amount.
So you use NOAA?
NOAA.
Oh, good.
Which is about.
I'm impressed.
Almost five inches of rain in a 24-hour period. So it's a pretty decent sized rainstorm.
What did you use as the, did you use, what method did you use drainage wise? Did you use rationale method?
Oh, no, like HydroCAD.
I'm an old, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So I don't know how to use HydroCAD.
Yeah. There's a bunch of different ways of.
No, I know, but I can do rational, but I can't do HydroCAD.
Yeah, yeah.
It doesn't matter. That's fine. I'm impressed with this. I'm very well done.
Yep. Just as clarification from comments and maybe just for your knowledge, some products that are available from manufacturers are only stocked in H20 loading. So there may be plans where.
Yeah, but that was a typical six-inch, six-foot diameter pit.
All right.
Six-foot diameter pit, H20 loaded. Why are you going to put that in the backyard?
Yeah, that would be a considerable price change.
I'm sitting there going, he's not going to follow the plan.
The changes that are spect on our plan are something that, at least on the local manufacturer, they only supply an H20.
I get you. But that was a typical, I think, six-foot diameter pit and I'm sitting there going H20 in the backyard?
Yeah.
I'm not thinking that.
Because we do have some drainage in the driveway and some areas.
So you use NOAA in the design criteria, which is really good. Somewhere we've got, as a board, we've got to get these criteria all standardized. Because he's using, instead of DEP, he's using NOAA, right? Which is a really good process. That's the way, that's the right way to do it.
Let me just make one comment.
What?
I just want to let you know, that's the first time I think I've ever heard Chairman Bonvy say that he was very impressed with their stormwater management.
It's the first time I've ever heard someone use NOAA as a design criteria. Everybody's DEP.
I always thought it was because we had color plans.
Say again?
I always thought it was because we had color plans.
No, no, I care less about color. My point is you're the first one that said I use NOAA.
That's kind of industry standard nowadays.
It is, but they're still coming in here using DEP.
And my, my point is if he's impressed, I am totally impressed.
No.
Because he's never impressed.
All right. I was looking at the lock coverage, the one other aspect. In my brain, I'm sitting there looking at the footprint and you're saying 11 or 10, 11%. And I'm multiplying it and trying to fit this, this on the plan, just as a real quick method. It's like I'm fitting it out like four times, which is 25%, although the ovaries, the little pieces, didn't fit together. It just doesn't seem like 11%. And if you're telling me it is and you've checked it, I'm fine with it. But it just doesn't seem like 11% lock coverage.
Yeah, so it's.
If you're sure, I'm fine.
Yep.
Okay. I'm all set.
I'm good.
Sharon, what's the date of the revised plan? 7/8?
Mary Ann has it.
I've got to go to the audience.
You might need to read that into the.
No one there, but.
Revised plan dated 7/8?
No, it's 7/9.
7/9.
So we'll have any other board questions then I have to go to the audience?
Any other audience?
I know, but I still got to say it. Anybody in the audience? No.
No.
So any other board questions?
Nope.
What's the height of the building?
34.9. It was right at the, the limit. Now, that is based on average existing grade based, based on zoning. So the, the house will be complying compliance, built up like four feet or so to make sure it meets the separation from the 100-year flood elevation. And with the attached garage, they have it set down slightly so that the yard, the front yard doesn't fill up the whole way, but it's still a few feet in front of the property. So once the final grade is proposed or constructed, it won't look like a 35-foot-high structure. We had to calculate it from today's grade, but come looking at it from the street, the front yard is actually going to be up about elevation 10, where it is about 7 now. So it'll look more like a 32-foot-high structure.
Well, that's certainly going to have to deal with that gentleman right there.
That's exactly correct.
And the architectural plans, the full set of architectural plans were revised prior to any submittals so that it shows that we meet the max height elevation.
I think typically David will do it, require like an elevation certificate.
Absolutely, absolutely. And the other point that I wanted to make is that if it was designed at the ninth, this, we're in the 10th edition officially.
Designed for the 10th.
Okay. So if we're in the 10th, we should have no problems, but I would definitely, of course, I'm going to, you know, elevation certificates for the flood and for the building height, of course. But my concern is if it was designed for ninth, we'd have to make some tweaks, but.
You're all set then, David?
It should be. I'll make it building code compliant no matter what.
Yeah. Now, I'm just saying, do you have any other questions?
Well, I don't.
Yeah, okay. All right. So audience. Board questions? Motion to close in public hearing, please.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion reference the application, please.
389 Monomoskoy Road. Owner Kim Surin requests a special permit under 174-17.1 and 174-33 of the zoning bylaws to raise an existing single-family residential structure and replace it with a new single-family structure on property located in an R3 zoning district, map 128 parcel 2, Nashpee, Mass. With the following conditions. Motion, number one.